I forget the name, but it's sort of like there's a Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, there's a Massachusetts Association of Town Managers, Town Administrators. They said that we hear from that group a lot more than we hear from the superintendents. We hear from the Board of Selectmen a lot more than we hear from school committees. And they were telling us, you need to have your school committees contact us, write us letters, tell us what you need. You need your superintendents to do the same thing. Because the other groups, and they're not saying we're in competition with town administrators, but they're saying that was their example they gave that day. They gave that specific example of we hear from the town administrators group all the time. And obviously, whatever group, whatever advocacy group it is, they're saying that's who we're hearing from.
Right.
So I'd like to support that. I'd like to have letters from the school committee go out with a similar feeling, if the school committee's comfortable with doing that. I didn't put it under recommendations. I put it under communications because it's a letter I wrote and sent to all these people. But I think it's something we might want to take up as a discussion and vote and say, would you support a letter like this coming from the school committee that would go off to Senator Pacheco, State Representative Gifford, and our local representatives?
Would someone here like to make a motion that we accept Scott's letter to be forwarded under our name that we can sign on to?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter that Scott has brought up to send out to Mr. Pacheco and the other legislators.
You have a second? Any discussion on this?
So one other thing to bring to light, because in that meeting, it was an interesting meeting, but he also led outside of education, you know, and one of the things that they were promoting a lot was that the elderly population is growing and the child population is stabilizing. And they hear from the elderly more than anybody else, the advocates for the elderly more than anybody else. But I've had, I mean, they've been reaching out, like Senator Pacheco's aide has reached out quite a bit to tell us about meetings and trying, so they're really trying to get a good perspective from people. And I had mentioned a couple of times about working with this committee and forming a committee that just gets together like once a month and sort of has volunteers who come and just make calls and start making calls and do that on them, you know, maybe get some selectmen involved, just get a bunch of people from town involved to make calls and contact those people on a consistent basis, you know. If you're doing it once a month, it's not that much of an obligation for everybody to buy into, but you're sort of getting a collaborative effort to reach out to them because the more they hear from us, the more they're going to listen.
Well, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, as the saying goes, but I mean, if they're only hearing from the senior population, and nothing against the senior population, but it makes it easy for our representatives on Beacon Hill to just push their energies towards them.
Well, and I think to the point, to have it on a sort of formulated committee where people meet, you're more representative of like, Scott's letter is very articulate in what the meaning of what we're trying to persuade. So sometimes people just reaching out aren't going to be able to say or know the right things to say or have the right terminology to express what they mean. So having a committee where people sort of have little scripted things to make their calls and to do make it a little bit easier to be more clear. Mark?
So the recommendation from Jeff Riley was to send letters to your local representative, so Senator Mike Pacheco and Representative Susan William Gifford, and then also to send a letter to Senator Jason Lewis, who is the chairperson of the Joint Committee on Education. So he's going to be the person who's taking all these bills and trying to bring them together to a resolution. So that's five crafted letters too, so one to Senator Jason Lewis, one to Mike Pacheco, and one to Susan Williams Gifford.
Okay.
And I'd love to do so under the school committee's name as well.
I think it sounds terrific. I appreciate your, I applaud your efforts for doing this and try to think out of the box here a little bit for the district. Do I have a, I have a motion in a second already. Do I have, all those approve of accepting Scott's letter?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Aye. Thank you very much. Want me to move right into reports from the superintendent?
Sure.
Personnel updates. So we've had a little bit of movement in personnel. Our new hires, Jennifer McCann in Transportation, Crystal McColgan from Food Services, and Maggie Finham is a long-term substitute in Transportation. We have one other new hire that I'd like to introduce tonight, but I'm going to hold that for a second. We had some resignations. Doug Bossari as a paraprofessional at the middle high school. Kelly Gibbs, a long-term sub-paraprofessional at the middle high school. Mary Legner is a adjustment counselor at Carver Elementary School as a retirement. So we did get an additional retirement this month, and we'll be recognizing Mary at our retirement reception in June. The introduction I'd like to spend a little bit more time on is Michael Schultz as the new principal of Carver Middle High School. So Mrs. Schultz, if you could come up, that would be great. So we are pleased to announce Mrs. Schultz is the next principal of Carver Middle High School. Mike has a master's degree in educational leadership from Bridgewater State College, serves as a teacher, as a physical education teacher, and has been assistant principal, athletic director at Carver Middle High School since 2006. Mike's had two successful terms as interim principal, the position which he's currently serving. He's really done a great job within that role. He's had a real vision for the direction that he'd like to take the school, and we're excited about having him move into the role. I wanted to give a little bit of background about the selection process. We had 31 people apply for the position. Christine Cabral and I reviewed the 31 candidates and selected six to be interviewed. We had several qualified candidates, including some current principals in other surrounding districts. We formed an interview committee of 18 people that consisted of students, teachers, parents, administrators, and one member of the school committee, Mr. Solomore. The committee selected three finalists. The finalists each had a site visit to school in which they toured the school, visited some classrooms, met with students, and had the opportunity to meet with staff after school, then interviewed with me personally. As part of the site visits, we asked students and staff to complete feedback forms for each candidate. Mike did a great job during the entire process, and I want to share some of the feedback that we got from students and staff. So a couple of the students' responses. He has great strengths. He's done a great job working with Alice, experience in Carver. He's worked, interested in pathways, experience in middle and high school sports. He wants to help improve. He wants to work with people. He wants to help people with their lives and go on to college and get into the right work. He has some great ideas with career pathways, which really sounds amazing, and I think can make a difference around here. A lot of good upcoming ideas and has many connections with students. Overall, I believe Mrs. Schultz is the best fit for principal. He's always really nice to everyone, and he has a plan of where the school wants to go. Great with staff and is an excellent communicator, providing staff with important information. Mike knows the building and staff very well. He's accessible, communicates easily, handles difficult situations calmly, organized, and has a good sense of humor. One of his strengths is he's a wonderful communicator with staff. He's done a great job as interim principal. Clear and consistent communication with staff, creative problem solving, presence throughout the building, always looks to support others. He's passionate about the school. He doesn't just want to be principal, he wants to be the principal of Carver Middle High School. He's self-aware in how he addresses students and situations. He's very approachable and friendly. He's sincerely vested in the interests of this school community and has a vision for our future that's both visionary and practical. Proven history as interim principal, assistant principal and athletic director. A positive can-do attitude. He successfully worked in the role over the last few months and has respect of most, many faculty and staff members. Mike's calm but efficient leadership is admirable. He's able to get things done and make progress quickly through efficiency and productive leadership. Mike Schultz is a fit for our school culture. He believes all our students can find success. He considers all their learning differences. He's a problem solver. Mike gets things done. Mike is sincere and passionate about our school. He knows what it will take to be a successful principal in Carver and bring the new ideas that the school needs. So I mean, that wasn't all the responses. That was just kind of an overview of the responses from faculty and staff who did the feedback piece. So I'm just excited about Mike coming in. I think he does have a vision of a direction he wants to take to school, and I wanted to take a couple of minutes to introduce him to the committee. And I don't know, so Mike, what are your thoughts? With that introduction, I'll turn it over to you.
I guess I'm just really excited about the opportunity. We've been working on some new ideas and some new initiatives. We're starting to share those with the students, the staff's on board, and just providing new opportunities and challenges for the students. They seem to be excited. And I'm looking very much forward to getting going and continuing the good work of our staff and our students, and I'm excited.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think you'll, obviously with that high appraise from your fellow staff members, you'll do well, and it seems like everyone had your back on that.
Yeah, it was overwhelming. When we finally announced it last week, my phone kind of blew up and people were excited. And I'm overwhelmed and humbled by the support of the staff. I don't know how many students know quite yet, but we're going to get that message out pretty quickly. And yeah, it's been great.
That's great. Any other comments?
The general impression is he's our guy. And thank you for letting us submit even if we didn't go. I heard he killed it.
I haven't heard that one yet. Thank you.
It's nice to have people who know this town and appreciate this town working in the positions that are going to matter. So congratulations.
So as James found, I did share all of the staff and feedback with you in the background.
Right.
Any other thoughts?
Any thoughts, comments?
No, representing the school committee on, and I got to see everyone that came through, and I got to see how Mr. Schultz stacked up against the competition. And he clearly separated himself with a vision. And that's exciting. It's exciting for us sitting here. It's got to be exciting for the parents and the students at home. I mean, you have somebody that's not going to be complacent, somebody that has a vision, and I know that is going to walk right in and want to see that follow through. So as a parent with young kids, I'm excited to have them look at you and say, that's going to be my principal someday. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Schultz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to move something up in the agenda, Mr. Chairperson. So down the bottom was elementary school handbook. So at this time, if that's okay with you, I'd like to invite Tanya Dawson to come up and share the handbook changes. The middle high school is still working on the handbook changes. That's going to come back at a later meeting. Tanya's changes are pretty minimal this year, but we'll let her take you through them.
Just like Mr. Neef said, this year, there's only four changes besides all the dates and the names that need to be changed. So on page two, our IMC student borrowing procedure, that's on the index, it's going to be changed to coyote book collection. Page 18, a quiet workspace free from distraction, we're going to change that to an area, a workspace that works for your child. Page 19, we're eliminating number five, turn off music. Some children need to have music while they're doing.
Where is that referencing specifically, where they have to turn off music?
Oh, under the, I'm sorry, under the homeworks are suggestions for how to support your child with homework.
Okay.
And on page 21, we're going to change the time from 8:25 to 8:15, since the students need to be in their classroom at 8:15.
8:15 is the beginning of the school day.
That's it again.
You should be tardy if you come in after.
If you're after the start, yeah, exactly.
Ten minute race period.
So very minor changes this year.
There were a lot last year or something.
Yeah, there was.
I think I came back twice.
Any other thoughts or comments on the changes?
Can I just make one comment? Just with the new election, can I begin here? Just as the school committee?
Oh, yes. All the, all names and all new names and all dates will be changed, and I will make sure that you are in there.
Have a smiley face next to it.
Smiley.
Control hard, too, if you want me to.
I told you no.
You told him no?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
I make a motion to accept.
Yeah, we did a motion. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Second.
Do I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite up Kim Dwayne and Sarah Shabano. Kim Dwayne is our adjustment counselor and director of guidance, and Sarah Shabano is an adjustment counselor in our CAP-TAP program. And Mrs. Ellis, who's joining them, is a testimonial, I believe. Sorry, that wasn't on the.
That's okay.
Let's get. So the CAP-TAP program is a program we've talked a little bit about here at the school committee. Carver Middle High School has been in operation for the past two years. It serves two student populations. First is the CAP, the Carver Alternative Program, which provides students with alternative pathways to graduation, including shorter days, online courses, internship opportunities. And then the TAP program, which is the Transition Assistance Program, assists students in transitioning back to a regular school schedule after a hospitalization or a social-emotional crisis that's caused them to be out of school. So they're going to kind of give us an overview of what's happened in these two programs in the last two years. So please welcome Sarah, Kim, and Mrs. Ellis.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, thank you. So we just wanted to give you a little update, like Mr. Neef said, about what we've been doing the past two years. So last school year, we established both the CAP and TAP programs. Immediately when the school year started, at the end of August, we initiated the CAP program, and that stands for the Carver Assistance Pro, I mean, I'm sorry, Carver Alternative Program. So those were, that was mainly started with students that were brought back from out-of-district placements that had severe social-emotional disturbances or issues that they needed a separate, different, alternative environment, and Carver wasn't working for them as the regular environment. So we brought those students back in the beginning of the school year, and we started that CAP program. We took a little bit of time with the TAP program before we started bringing the students in for that particular program. That's the Transitional Assistance Program. That's modeled after a bridge program that was started in Brookline, Massachusetts, many years ago, which I'll get into a little bit. But we wanted to really kind of define that program, set the program parameters, and really work in conjunction with the Bright Network before we started taking students into that program. So we saw our first student at the end of January. And we just saw a need for the program. Kimberly Dwayne saw that there was an increasing number of hospitalizations, and those students were struggling when they were coming back, and they needed more support. And then Karen Teigart saw an increase in students needing a different environment, and we were sending more and more students out of district, and it would just be optimal to keep those students in district. So as Mr. Neef said, the TAP program is the Transitional Assistance Program. That's a bridge program that's short-term, and our main focus is to get those students back from a long absence, back into their regular classes. So they stay with their original schedule that they had. We might make some minor adjustments if the student needs it, but it's a really individualized plan. We meet with the students and the guidance team, Mrs. Dwayne, and whoever the guidance counselor for that student is, and we come up with a plan of what makes sense most for that student. And then the TAP staff works in conjunction with the student, the family, the teachers, and the guidance staff to really get them back on track and back into their classes and caught up with any work that they've missed. And that program, like I said, was modeled after a program that was started at Brookline High School in conjunction with the Brookline Mental Health Community Center. And they really, they set up this program that was working quite well. Other programs in Boston, other schools in Boston started to start similar programs. They formed a Bright Network where they now give guidance and support to other programs that are starting throughout the state. And now I believe there's over 100 bridge programs in existence. And we work really closely with Bright as a support for us. They offer a lot of guidance for us individually. They come in and kind of work with us and our team and make suggestions and give us a lot of feedback about what we're doing. And then we also go to the regional meetings that they have with other schools. So we're able to collaborate and work with other schools and see what they're doing and what works and what might not have worked somewhere else before, you know, we do the trial and are at our place. So it's been really helpful to work closely with the Bright Network. The CAP program is the alternative program. So that's basically, a regular school environment is not working for those students for whatever reason. We are substantially separate. We're in one classroom for both of those programs. The students that work in the CAP classroom traditionally work online on an ingenuity platform, so they have a little bit of flexibility about what classes they want to take, how quickly they want to do those classes. Some students are able to work a little bit more quickly than taking traditional classes at the school with a teacher, teacher-led instruction. We do also offer some classes that are teacher-led and led by myself as well, so that students can kind of break up their day a little bit, and they're also, they can also have internships outside of the school. So with the TAP program, the, I'm sorry, excuse me. With the TAP program, we have served five students the first year. We, from January to June, like I said, we started a little bit later. We served five students within that time. This school year, we've served 12 students so far, and of those 12 students, three were repeat students that we saw from last year. And then currently, we have six students that are using TAP for various levels of support. Some of those students are in our program for a few periods a day. Some students are in their regular, back in their regular classroom, and they really just come to us for as-needed support. So again, that's really individualized depending on that student. The CAP program, in our first year, we served 11 students. As I mentioned before, five of those students were brought back from out-of-district placements. Five of those 11 students graduated from Carver Middle High School at the end of last school year. One moved to the Gateway Dual Enrollment Program from which he graduated. One student moved to a different special education program at Carver Middle High School. One student transferred to MAP Academy. Two students moved out of district, and one went to outside placement. That was last year. This year, we are currently serving nine students, and of those nine students, eight would have been out-of-district placements. Two of those students are set to graduate. One student is moving to another special education program within Carver Middle High School, and the rest of those students were, we're assuming, will return to the CAP program next year. And then just to give you a little bit of background about typically what we see with our students, the TAP students that come in usually have a diagnosis of anxiety or a mood disorder like depression or a major depressive disorder. We did have one student that came in after a surgery and missed a significant amount of time, but for the most part, the students that we see in TAP have anxiety or mood disorders. And then the CAP students, similar. We see a lot of students with anxiety, and MDD stands for major depressive disorder. So there are 10% of our students in the CAP program currently have anxiety disorders. 40% of the students that we've served in the CAP program have a mood disorder like depression, major depressive disorder. 20% of the students have ADHD, and then 30% have another diagnosis like oppositional defiance disorder, reactive detachment, attachment disorder, or PTSD was another one that was in there. And then the function of the TAP program for the students, some students, we, as I mentioned, it's typically a reentry program. So the students have been outside of school for a significant amount of time, and we're helping them re-enter back into their regular schedule. So 56, a little over 56% of the students that are using the TAP program are using them as a reentry, using the program as a reentry tool. But we do also use it as a preventative measure. So, you know, Mrs. Dwayne or a guidance counselor might recognize that a student is really struggling and they're having a difficult time in school. So before letting it get to a place where they need to be hospitalized or need to go into an outpatient treatment facility, we try to kind of set them up with some support within school that might help to alleviate some of those issues. And then the CAP students, this is just a little bit to show you. So from the students that we've served in the CAP program, 25% of those were brought back from out-of-district. So we were sending them somewhere else, and we brought them back in, and they stayed with us. And 40% of the students that we've served in the program would have been out-of-district placements under normal circumstances if this program didn't exist. And then the other 35%, the CAP program was just a better fit than kind of a traditional setting, school setting.
So with this data, we wanted you to be able to see the impact that these programs have on students and their, you know, different facets of their school day. And so when it says for all SE students, that means all students at Carver Middle High School that are struggling with a social or emotional disability of some kind. And so you can see that, you know, it starts with the 2013-14 school year, and we had a really, you know, big rise in the amount of absences of those students from school. And it started to decline when we opened the programs. And then you can see there's a big difference, you know, since, in the last two years since that, those programs have been open. And now we're looking at hospitalizations. And so that includes both psychiatric, like overnight hospitalizations as well as day programs. But again, the data is very similar to what you just saw, where, you know, we had this sort of steady increase since the 2013-2014 school year. It, you know, it peaked the year before the programs opened, and then drastic decline since then. And again, we, obviously, students are still, you know, some still require hospitalization. But I think that the services that we're providing, we're also preventing some of that from happening, which is nice. Now we're looking at academic failures. And again, very, very similar data. It goes, you know, it goes, there's this sharp increase, and then we open the two programs, and it starts to go down again from 2017, 18, and this year. And then, I'm sorry, and then number of tardies, because again, if you're, if you're not in school, even if you're there part of the day, but if you're, if you're late, whether it's an hour late or two hours late, you're still missing instruction. So these count too, and obviously impact credits and all of that kind of thing. And we're just seeing the same thing over and over again in all these different areas.
Yeah, it looks like you just recreated the same slide.
Yeah. It's all different, but it's true, right? I mean, it's pretty obvious. And then obviously dismissals too, right? So when, when kids are struggling and they feel like they don't have the support that they need in school, they call home and they say, please come get me. I can't be here. I can't stay here. And, you know, it's disruptive for everybody. And, but when we're able to give them the support that they need, they're able to stay.
That's great.
And then we just wanted to give you a little snapshot of our room. So the room that we have is A107, and that room houses both programs, the TAP program and the CAP program. So we have a couple of different areas so that students have a place where they feel comfortable, no matter if they're coming in and out of the classroom or if they're there all day. So we have kind of like a traditional desk area. And then when, at the next slide, a couple of slides, we have a comfortable area where students can sit. There's like couches and comfortable chairs, if that helps them feel like a little bit more comfortable and able to do their work. And then we just have like another area that's, that's kind of tucked away. So if a student wants some space, they have that option. We've also, since these pictures have been taken, have added in some partitions so that if, you know, if they want more space and to kind of feel like they need a little bit of a more secluded area, they have that option as well. And then my office, you can't really see it, but that door right there on the right-hand side, that's my office. So my office is actually in the classroom so that I'm available to the students the whole day.
The other thing that's really nice is that it has an outside door. So, you know, some students, if they're really struggling getting into the building, they can, you know, come in that way. And I know that Sarah has gone out many times to cars to help, you know, help support students coming into the building. And when they know that they can come straight into that room, it's not as daunting for them, I guess, which is nice too. And so Sharon Ellis is here, and we also have some written statements. We thought, you know, the most important feedback that we can get about the programs, God bless you, are, you know, obviously the students, but also the parents and the families. They're what this is for and the most important. So we thought it'd be important for you to hear from them as well.
So my daughter, I think that's, you can hear me, right? Okay. I'll just lean forward a little bit. My daughter is a 2018 graduate of the CAP program. And over the course of her middle and high school years, serious social-emotional needs, executive functioning issues, and poor self-esteem seriously impacted her ability to succeed in the traditional school setting. During her senior year, various situations came to a head. Continued struggles with academics, emotional dysregulation, relationship issues, and a literal stumble on the path of life in the form of a fall that resulted in a broken ankle turned an already serious situation into a critical one. Katie had every intention of dropping out of school, and if that didn't happen, it looked very likely that she would be failing most of her classes, preventing her from graduating on time. The CAP program saved my daughter, and I'll be honest, me, in many ways. This program changed everything for Katie. The one-on-one instruction, the built-in classroom supports, and the constant encouragement Katie received helped turn Katie into a more confident, willing, and motivated student. With a great deal of support in school through the CAP program, constant support from home, and outside counseling services, Katie transformed from a possible high school dropout into a student whose last term of her senior year a student whose last term of her senior year was the best she had ever had in the entirety of her middle and high school careers. It was an amazing thing to witness, the confidence Katie now had, the proof that she could be successful, the knowledge that hard work and dedication pay off, and the recognition that some of our greatest life achievements are born from our biggest struggles. These are all pieces of the foundation that Katie continues to build, which will support her as she moves forward into adulthood. Life is definitely still a struggle for Katie sometimes, but the beautiful lessons that she has learned as a result of her time in the CAP program continue to shape her today as she navigates this next chapter in her life. Without the program, the CAP program, I would not be sitting here before you as the proud parent of a girl, oh gosh, I might cry here, sorry, who was able to realize her dream to walk across the stage and receive her high school diploma. I will be forever grateful to the amazing staff of the CAP program and for everyone who supported my daughter during her time at Carver Middle High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a written statement from another parent that I'm going to read, and then Sarah will read one as well. Our family dealt with the transition of returning to school twice, once before and once after the TAP program was instituted at Carver Middle High School. Our initial experience was not only disappointing, but also devastating for our child. Not all of the teachers attempted to allow our student to catch up with the class, but also held them responsible for learning the material on their own. Facing the stress of not understanding the class topics and projects, but also suffering the low test scores and grades was beyond the comprehension by some of the teachers. The lack of empathy only increased the depression and created a whole new set of problems. The grades plummeted, and the total hatred of attending CMHS soared. We had enlisted therapy, family counseling, and medical guidance to help us through the sadness of our child. Luckily, upon the beginning to the new school year, the guidance department and the Carver Middle High School had a new and improved transitioning program in place. The principal and the guidance team had a whole new approach to what kind of experience the students would face when returning to school, and I am so grateful. The TAP program not only became fully engaged in the day-to-day adjustments that would be necessary for success, the program which includes help with homework, most importantly, advocated for the student. If, for whatever reason, the child was not catching up with the class, the TAP team member would actually reach out to the teacher. The TAP team knew how classes were going and what topics the student was struggling. They were able to negotiate with the teacher approaches to testing, studying, and expected projects. Although the grades and test scores obviously were improved by the intervention of the TAP team, ultimately, the compassion the team and the guidance department had was the true success of the program for my child. During the adjustment period, my student was allowed to interact with the people they trusted every day at least once, but at the beginning, the re-entering period required more support, and they were there. When class time and expectations were overwhelming, the TAP people stepped in, and my child benefited greatly. I know the TAP program is available for students with various reasons for extended absence from school, but the approach seems to be very much tailored for the needs of these children. I am so thankful for all of the people we have been dealing with this year. Sometimes, the positive results for these programs aren't clearly apparent, but this is an important program. I personally will be as supportive for the TAP group as I can be. Having experienced virtually no support and then to have this program in place, I can tell you it is necessary for the entire family, but especially the child who would suffer enormously, enormously without the TAP folks.
And this was written at the end of last school year. Dear Ms. Holly, I'm writing to let you know how much I appreciate the TAP program that Carver High School has implemented recently. The program has been wonderful, helping my child with their struggles this year. Ms. Charbonneau has been absolutely amazing in not only helping my child, but myself, to navigate through this time. She has been great as liaison between my child's teachers to keep him on track, to finish out their junior year. I feel like if this program were not available, my child would have suffered and probably not be finishing this year as strongly. Ms. Goncalves and Mr. Doyle have also been wonderful. This program is definitely an asset to Carver High School for students like my child, and I'm grateful that they have been a part of it.
Well, thank you, ladies, for presenting that to us. Any comments from the committee?
No, thank you very much.
Go ahead, please.
I just want to commend you, because one thing that we've not seen in a lot of schools around is that SEL component, and that every teacher is a teacher of SEL, and I think what you guys have done is above and beyond what's, what's happening in a lot of places. So, thank you, and that's, that's great.
Yeah, I think to my point, as a parent who has a student who's absent sometimes due to certain concerns and is also executive function, I think that's something that's really misunderstood, and especially for a lot of parents, it's frustrating to know how to deal with that. So, working with a student who's out for a day or two here and there, or three days, catching up with Jupiter grades is a, is a chore in its own. So, for what you're doing with those students, I can't even imagine what it would be like long-term to try and keep them up and get them caught up with that. So, thank you so much for all the work you do with this program, because it's, it's huge to, to the students, but really, to the parents who are really trying to support and make things happen. It's, it's just enormous to know that that support is there as well. So, thank you very much for that.
And I would just like to recognize Kim, Kim Sierra, and Karen Tykert. I think the two of them, even in, even at the end of my term as principal, as I shifted from being a principal to superintendent, were identifying this need. You know, the data showed that from Kim, we had all these students with hospitalizations, we had all these students with social-emotional concerns, and the population was just really growing for us. And they identified that need and responded to it. And the response became the creation of these two programs, and Kim and Karen really took the leadership in that. I'd also like to thank the staff, in terms of Sarah and Lindsay Goncalves, who's a special education teacher in the program, and Mike Doyle, who was the, who's been the parent for most of the time. Mike's currently doing a long-term sub. He wants, his goal is to be an English teacher. Right now, he's doing a long-term sub for us for maternity leave in English. But for most of the time, the program's been in place, that's been the core staff. So I just want to thank them for all the work that they've done. It really has brought some tremendous benefits to the Carver Public Schools and the Carver Middle High School. The reality is, last year, we had, and I think I reported this either last, me and the mean before, we only had one dropout last year. We want to have zero dropouts, but last year, we had one, which was the low, that's the lowest dropout rate in the history of the school. And, I mean, this year, we're, I think there's been, we're gonna have more than one. It's not gonna be a huge number, though. I think it's still on one hand, it's gonna be under one hand. And that's really our goal, is we're trying to find as many alternative paths as we can to assist and help students reach graduation, and these two programs are a part of that, that experience. So, thank you.
Thank you for approving. Two years ago, thank you for saying yes. You can, you can open these.
I'm glad we did that, obviously, and I'm very happy to get these updates on these, on these two programs, because one of the things that people don't think about a lot, we talk about budget numbers and things like that, but anything we can do to keep our kids in the district and help them in district and not send them to another town or another facility, not only helps the child to be around their, all their peers and their friends, but keeps the money in our district that we need. And also, I think whatever we can do, and you've, you're doing it, to keep, as Scott said, keep kids here and keep them in the school on a path to graduation. I think that's so important, because that one thing could be the, the road to send them one way in life or another, you know? So I think it's, it's incredible what you're doing right now. The only, a little bit of concern was, was the, on a security standpoint, as you said, the, the door, kids can come in, the dedicated, another door on the side. Maybe we can work with Scott and Mike about just making sure the, the security, safety protocols are still being followed for that entryway. I'm, I'm sure they are, but just in case.
It's locked, so it's a matter of if they're coming in, they're let in.
They would have to be let in by a staff member, would know they're a member of the program and let them in that door.
Okay, I just, I, I mean, after what happens in the world these days, you kind of have to think this way, unfortunately, but, well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to invite up Mr. Schultz, who, as long as he's ready. We'll check with Mr. Brothers, make sure he's ready.
Lighting issue at the stadium.
So.
Not be, Bill?
No, Bill's here.
The timer, the timer just shut the lights off in the middle of the game, so I'm trying to put the lights back.
Oh, no. Would you like us to make a change in the order?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Okay. So, next year, at the middle high school, we're looking to return seventh-grade teams within our current staffing model. And Mike's here to talk about that a little bit, about where, kind of where that thought process come from and how we're gonna be able to accomplish that next year. I think over time, there's always kind of been a goal, there's been a little bit of concern at the middle school that we did not have teams grade six, seven, and eight. For many years, we've only had teams in grade six. But as we looked at our staff and we looked at student population, we came up with a way to return seventh-grade teams. So Mike's gonna just talk about that a little bit for next year.
Okay.
Lights back on?
I think the lights are back on. I think I'm good. So I thought I would start by kind of giving just a quick history of the grade six teams and then kind of where we are currently. So when I started 14 years ago, we were obviously two schools in one building. We had a middle school principal, six, seven, and eight, and we had a high school principal, nine through 12. And that was our model, so it was a true middle school model. We were part of New England League of Middle Schools, and six, seven, eight teams existed. As part of our restructuring, reduction in staff, we reorganized into one principal probably 10 years ago now?
Yes, 2009, March of 2009, I became the principal.
And at the time, because of the reorganization of staff, reduction in staff, we were not able to continue with the traditional middle school model of seventh and eighth-grade teams. We still felt it'd be valuable for students, or extremely important for, to keep the integrity of grade six teams as students transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. So we did keep the middle school model in grade six, but seven and eight was sort of pretty much adopting the high school schedule. One of the things that happened during that time, under one principal, is we went to one schedule. It allowed us to do a couple of things which basically supported the reduction in staff. Some of our teachers that traditionally taught middle school were then able to cross over to other grades, and we were able to sort of serve a need. When we did that, I think it was beneficial for us as a building, because some of our middle school teachers were able to teach different curriculums, the high school teachers were able to teach middle school. So it definitely helped sort of build the, the environment that we have now. But I think we've always been trying to bring back seventh-grade teams. Most recently, feedback from parents and teachers is that students, as they leave sixth grade, still are not ready for that complete independence of going into, into seventh grade on their own. The, the good thing about the seventh-grade team model is it allows our teachers to common plan, it allows our, our teachers to build interdisciplinary opportunities, they have a better handle on students within their groups, so they're managing student concerns, they're sharing information about students, whether it be a family issue or a behavior issue. So there's that collaboration, there's that support, there's always somebody sort of watching students as they transition from class to class. And the feedback from parents and, and teachers over the last several years is that students still need that support in grade seven. And so, we've been talking about it for the last couple of years, we've been trying to find a way to support a seventh-grade team model and still be able to operate as a building and sort of cover other classes. So this year, we've come up with a plan to bring back seventh-grade teams. So if we could, we have a sort of a grid of how we've created this, and I will say that this is still a work in progress in that we need to sort of fine-tune sort of the off-time pieces, so when they're off-team, when they're going to their electives, we need to make sure that we're offering the right amount of electives and we're covering this. But if you look at that, that model, what we've come up with is, and a lot of, some of this came from a department chair meeting, and Mr. Neef was very involved in sort of figuring out, how do we staff and how do we support three different teams with 80 different students, thereabouts? So we will still have a traditional sixth-grade team of about 80 sixth-grade students. And then, we would have, we would create a traditional seventh-grade team with about 80 students. And then, the, the last component would be, we would have a split sixth and seventh-grade team, which is not too uncommon. Other schools have done this, Plymouth has done this, Silver Lake has done this, where you have the same group of teachers teaching both a seventh-grade curriculum and a sixth-grade curriculum, which a lot of our teachers currently do anyway. So in that top grid there, you will see that, and we've, we've labeled the teachers that are gonna be there, but basically, you'd have a seventh-grade math class and a seventh-grade science class run opposite a sixth-grade English and a sixth-grade geography class. The only, the only downside to the sixth-grade split team, and it's not necessarily on the students' end, is that the common planning time wouldn't exist as well, so the preps would be sort of off, but there would always be that team element. So if you look at period four, there would be a team planning time, which brings back that concept of, of collegiality, working with students, understanding the, the population of students that you have. The reason why we've sort of clustered math and science together and English and geo is, is they would have common planning time, and there would be that interdisciplinary opportunities, which lends itself typically to math and science and English and, and history. So that's, we would have a 40, 40/40 split, so approximately 40 seventh graders and 40 sixth graders. And the only thing that we're really sort of working out now is the, the off-team time stuff, like the Aladots and the electives. The split team would have some sixth and seventh-grade Aladot classes together, so there technically could be some sixth and seventh-grade students in the same technology class, the same music class. We wouldn't cluster them in health or phys ed, but ultimately, some of the other Aladot classes, I think, would be, would be clustered together. And in those classes, a lot of it is project-based, so they're pacing themselves, they're working on projects. We don't see a real issue with that. So although this is not completely finalized, what, where we are now in the process is we're running students through this. So we're actually putting kids into classes, we're gathering our class sizes, we're making sure that students have a place to be on their off-team, we're incorporating, you know, where they are for phys ed, band, and so forth. So you've got several layers of, of running this. And we're, I think we're in round maybe six or seven in terms of where we are, but we're close to finalizing this schedule. The teachers involved have been notified, and they sort of know where they're gonna be teaching, and the next step would be communicating this more formally once the schedules are finished with parents and the community.
And the only, the only other piece I want to add into this is, you know, this is something we thought about in terms of creating this split team concept or having three teams for two grade levels. And the question, or a question that may come in your mind is, is this sustainable? And it is sustainable, because if you look at the elementary school in grades K through five, the classes there average between 120 and 130 kids. So we're looking at the pipeline, at least for the next four, five, six years, saying we're gonna have the same, about, same, approximately the same population. Obviously, there's gonna be variations, so, you know, there might be a year that one of these teams has 87 or 88 kids on it. But in general, it's a sustainable model, a sustainable model for the next X number of years, and we said that ultimately, this is a model that we can create within our current staffing, and, and then maybe provide better supports for students by having that team in the seventh grade, because the concept of the team is they have, all the same kids have the same teacher, and those people can work together to support those students. And this, we've been talking about trying to find ways to bring back seventh-grade teams for many, for a couple of years, it's a conversation that happens a lot, and then was we started to look at it and said, this is a model that can work and be sustainable for at least the next six, seven years within the Carver Public Schools without changing our staffing. Because ultimately, what was happening this year is, some of those teachers were just, were teaching, all of our sixth-grade teachers were teaching one seventh-grade class anyhow, and then some of those seventh-grade teachers were teaching three or four seventh grade and an eighth grade. So we said, if people, if, so teachers are teaching one seventh-grade class anyhow as a sixth-grade teacher, even our sixth-grade team teachers were teaching one seventh-grade class. We said, we can, we can put this together and make it really a team structure for six and seven, and Mike's taking the lead in doing that, and we're excited about it, and we think it's gonna provide some good opportunities for our kids next year in terms of improved service.
And one of, and one other piece of the scheduling component is that this is gonna lend itself well to the, the pathways that we're trying to work on, because, you know, you're bringing the, the sixth and seventh-grade students, they're gonna have the support they need, they're gonna be in a team-based model, they're gonna be exposed to some of the Aladot and electives that we're offering. well to the pathways that we're trying to work on, because, you know, you're bringing the sixth and seventh grade students, they're going to have the support they need, they're going to be in a team-based model, they're going to be exposed to some of the Aladot and electives that we're offering. We're going to really have eighth grade look more like an exploratory year, like we talked about. So this new schedule change allows us to do that. And then one of the big changes that we've done on the middle school side in terms of scheduling is, a lot of our electives were term-based. So you get a term of something, and then you'd go off-term and you'd come back. We structured the whole building around a semester-based schedule. So these electives and these activities for the, for the sixth and seventh grade team model, either be a red or green day, we do a red or green day, A or B day. So one day you might be in phys ed, the next day you're in something else. Traditional middle school kind of environment model. For eighth grade, they're going to follow more of a high school schedule that's going to be semester-based, again, exploratory, getting, taking advantage of some of the classes that we may be offering at a lower level at the pathways program, but semester-based. So our eighth grade, as they transition out of teams, and we think at that point they'll have two years of that support, they'll transition into a transition year with eighth grade where they're exploratory, and they're getting a feel for what high school's like. And then as they enter high school, hopefully they'll decide a path that they want to go down, and we start working on that career pathway part of it. The other thing, just as a side, that we noticed and want to do is transitions between grade levels. So we do a transition between five and six, because it's a shift in buildings. We haven't in a while done a transition between eighth and ninth, and I think it got lost because they're in the same building, so what's the transition? But there is a huge, there's a huge transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. And we're going to recognize that, and we're going to start working to do a freshman orientation or something that helps that transition. So this team model supports the eighth grade exploratory, then supports our overall vision of the graduate or the pathways, and I think it solves a lot of concerns for us.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
I think this is great. I think there's opportunity here in that split team level, where if you strategically picked six graders coming in, that they may have the opportunity to loop also. So if you have this team, these students who might need familiarity with teachers over a couple of years, thank you. And, sorry, I lost my train of thought of that. But yeah, so it's just like, taking that sixth, moving them into seventh with the same group of teachers, it could, you know, you'll get that SEL component.
We identified that looping's a possibility. We haven't said, we haven't committed to that yet, but we definitely said that looping could be a possibility.
But it's built in here, too. It's nice.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've talked about that possibility, yep.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. All right, our next topic is the Sustainability Study Committee. I know we have the chairperson of the Finance Committee, Mr. Jermaine is here, so I don't know if we want to invite him up.
Alan, would you like to come up to speak on this?
And then I know that there was a discussion about this at the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday night, which Ms. Cattrelli was present.
And Brad went. Mr. Brothers.
So maybe, maybe Mr. Jermaine can give us an overview on what this committee is for the rest of the committee here. And I know he's looking for possible participation from the school committee, as well as the Board of Selectmen. And also, it'll be with the entire FinCom.
That's right. It's, from what you may have heard, it's not a target to the school department. We're not, FinCom has no control over your budget, we're well aware of that. You guys are an island all to yourselves. But in the overall picture of the entire fiscal responsibility of the whole town of Calver, and that's all of it, that's all $40 million dollars of it, we're looking at the sustainability going forward. We know that a couple of years from now, there's going to be a challenge with the school department's budget in the contractual obligations. We know there are a lot of wants and needs from the local, from the town, from their departments. We have a new opening in planning that occurred today. So there's, there's a lot of stuff. I know that the chief would like to have a deputy chief, I know that the DPW is shorthanded, I know that there are some departments within this building that are short. So everybody has a need, everybody has a want, everybody has a wish list. And one of the things we're doing as a full member, as a full committee for the first time in a long time on the Finance Committee is, I like to ask every department that comes, what's your wish list? So, because it's a balance in that. You guys know that, you guys know that you, you go into your meetings and you dance on the head of a pin, trying to make it work. And last year, this last season, we helped you guys to make it work. And, and I'm glad we did, and I still will stand by it was the right thing to do. I just don't want to have it be a problem two years from now, and I don't want to start seeing layoffs. So we're looking at the whole big picture of, what can we do here? Where are we going planning-wise? What is the revenue forecast? What's the tax levy going to be? Stephen Cole asked me a very interesting question, and I'd like to pose it to the school committee.
And he's the Tom Planner?
He's the, well, up until today, he gave his notice, so. He will be departing sadly. But he asked me, he says, there are two things facing the town going forward. He says, the first thing is, the old guys like you, I said, thank you. Can we stay here when we retire? Because of the tax base. But the more important thing to that was, go ask the seniors and the juniors, what are their plans? When they graduate, if they don't go on to college and they stay with mommy and daddy, and they decide, you know, they get a job and they move out, can they afford to stay in the town they were brought up in? Or do they do, like a lot of them do, have to go off someplace, live in a third-floor tenement, and then 15 years from now, when they're married and they got a couple of kids, try to move back into the town, because they want to come back to their roots? What's that in-between? And why can't they stay? Why can't they afford to stay? Same thing if you go off to college and try to come back. So we're looking at the big picture, the whole big ball of wax. And it's not just tomorrow's numbers, it's tomorrow's in two years, in three years, in five years. And everything is on the table, as far as, we're going to compile data, which is where Brad is so incredibly helpful, as is Meg Lemay. Because we are useless without the data. We'd like to have a representative or two from the school committee, and we'd like to have a representative or two from the selectmen. They will actually become part of that voting board, if you will, but one vote per, for the selectmen, one vote for the school committee. And I wanted to include the entire Finance Committee, because I, we got a lot of new people on it. We have some very experienced people on it. In August, we have Pat Maha coming on, we have Steve Pratt on it now, we got three new gentlemen that have come back to Calver with their families. So, and plus the cranky old ones like me and Bill Duggan, and, you know, which is good. So we have a pretty good balance. Beth Selger is the Finance Director for South Shore Hospital. She deals with a larger budget than the entire town of Calver, which she kind of finds comical. So she's a wealth of knowledge. Kate Banzel's our Vice Chair, she's been a lifelong Calver resident. So we have a real diversified Finance Committee this year. It's, this, it doesn't lean in any direction. It leans in the direction of just trying to be responsible. So that's where we're at. We'd like your input, we can't do this without you. If there's any voting, and I'm sure this is going to cross your mind, what are the votes? It would simply be to bring a program back to your group. Or if it was a, something that would work town-wide, it would be a program to bring to town meeting, or a program to bring to a department head meeting. So it would be, and then we start to add it all up and try to figure it out. We're trying to come up with a solution so that we can go forward and sustain where we're at. We'd love to get involved in that letter-writing thing you're doing. I think Finance Committee should be involved in that statewide also. Why aren't the Finance Committees writing to these representatives, kicking and screaming about, hey, where's our state aid? Where's our money for the schools? This impacts the Finance Committee as much as it impacts the school committee.
I can give you a copy of the letter, and you can bring it to them and send it off.
Me a copy of the letter, I'll have nine people sign off on it with the Finance Committee. I have no problem with that. The more we can work together, the School Committee and the Finance Committee can work hand in hand, the more we can accomplish. And I have no problem with doing that. So if I can help you guys, I'm all for it. If you guys can help us, we'll certainly reach out. That's where we're at. We'd like to have, you know, one or two members that want to be involved. Brad is going to, I assume, is going to be at some of the meetings, and you will furnish some of the information so that we're not playing in the dark here. I don't like dealing with false numbers, I don't like dealing with I-don't-knows, I'm-not-shoes. I like to have concrete information so that the whole committee can make an intelligence decision. You can't make decisions on, geez, I think it was, it might have been, I'm not sure yet. You can't do anything with that, so.
All right. I mean, this is something that started long before, not long, but before I was on the committee, meeting with the selectmen, you know, trying to have joint meetings with the selectmen and the school committee, to have the two committees work better together, because we all know that these two committees weren't, you know...
There was a few years of tensions.
Things that weren't going very well. And that joint session was really started as a non-formal session. To be about just making sure that we're communicating and realizing each other are people and talking to each other, because, you know, and just eliminating the stigma, I get where it comes from, because I understand, and when you're talking about that budget, these guys, you want concrete, man, these guys have to deal with variables that change every time the wind moves a different direction. So there aren't a lot of constants you're probably going to get, because a lot of things do drift and change. But I think that, you know, we're one community, man. Everything that comes out of my pocket, your pocket, their pocket, it all goes to the same thing. It's not the school and the town, it's, it's everybody.
And you guys hear the same thing that I hear.
We do, and, but I will tell you, as a parent, I mean, you know, when we, if you're a parent, and even, you know, if your kids are older and grown up, you're still spending money on your kids, no matter how old they are. They're the biggest part of your budget, no matter what you're looking at.
That's right.
So right now, the schools are a big part of our town budget, because that's kind of how life goes, you know? And I think, I've always been a fan of any communication. I was one of the ones that promoted that joint committee, because if we're not clear on understanding each other and where we're coming from, we're never going to get anything done. If we're always building up walls and trying to say, your side, my side, this is one town. That's right. And we've got to come up with more concrete conclusions that way, which I think I fully agree with you on. I think my biggest concern is, is just the voting aspect of it. I'd rather see, I'd rather see no voting authority given to any, any members, because...
I think it's more for policy, Jim. It doesn't really have anything to do with a dictatorial type of a thing, where we're going to take a vote, where you guys will trim 5% off your budget, and we'll trim 2% off of it. It's not going to come down to anything like that, because we don't have that authority, we don't have that control.
Right.
I think it's more for policymaking. That's the only reason, it probably shouldn't even, it'd probably be more of a consensus than it's ever going to be a vote.
To my point, though, your committee is all there, so there'll be a consensus. You're asking one voice to be a consensus for the other four people that aren't there. So I don't know if that's necessarily a, like, no matter how it works out, if, if somebody from the school committee votes on that, it's going to be perceived that that's the way the school committee voted. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's what I would, I would hope.
Well, but how would we know if only one member is voting and not representing with everybody's voice? Do you know what I'm saying?
I'm assuming that you guys pretty much all are on the same page with stuff, aren't you?
Well, we just had a budget vote a few months back, we were three to two.
Three to two, yeah. So, I mean, I thought, by, by you talking about voting, was voting a consensus for suggestions to go back to the certain, the specific committees in town, or boards in town. And if, like, if something, if they voted for something, whether they voted or not, I mean, that's fine, but...
But here's my point, you're voting as the school committee rep. So regardless of, that's just your voice, and I'm not against, I'm just trying to rationalize the whole thing that's being set up. You're going to vote, and Andy Carterelli votes yes. Well, what if three school committee members don't agree with that?
Ultimately, anything that was voted on there would have to be voted by this committee first.
That's right.
Well, I understand, this is a public meeting also, so, you know...
Well, the school committee reps, if it's something about the school committee, they could abstain from the vote. And if, you know...
Well, but that's what the whole thing is, I mean, not the whole thing, but that's...
But I mean, if that's what you're concerned, we can still bring it back to the, we can still bring it back to the school committee.
Well, but here's, I guess, to my question, because, and I'm, thank you for coming tonight, I'm very glad you showed up and you're here to answer these, man. It's, it's really not even a subcommittee, right, is what I've been told. It's just FinCom. So I just...
It was going to be a subcommittee, and, and the town administrator and I, those that know me know I'm real big on fair. And I didn't think it was right to bring in what amounts to five new members to the Finance Committee, and then say, by the way, we're going to do a subcommittee with the school department, and it's going to be five people, and you guys can't be on it.
Right.
You know, you don't want to do that. So there'll be other participation, there's going to be, it's still going to be a public meeting. I really would prefer to have the whole thing come out as like a roundtable discussion more than anything else. I really don't want it to be a Finance Committee meeting.
Okay.
We may have our Finance Committee meeting, and then adjourn that meeting and go into this. It still will be a public session, but I don't think I want to have it be a quote, "formal" meeting. I'd rather have it be a roundtable workshop.
That's kind of what the intent of the joint School Committee/Selectmen were, and as, as it progressed, it got sort of distorted because of what people expected to get from it, and whether it's going to be televised or not. And really, the whole intent was to get the Selectmen and the School Committee together to start talking to each other.
That's exactly it.
So I guess, you know, it's the same idea, it's the right idea, we have to, you have to be careful about how it gets sort of, well, you can't do that like that, it has to be public this, and it has to be televised, and not in that room.
It'll be, it'll be a advertised, public meeting, because you can't have that kind of a quorum set up and not have it be that. So I have no problem with that. I'm not sure it's going to be recorded for posterity. I think we're going to have a recording secretary to take the notes. We have a wonderful new girl that, Anne Marie Anne, of course, but we have Kelly DeCarli, who just got hired in to do the ZBA notes, and she did them for one meeting, and I scooped her right up and had her do it for the...
Was that the woman that was at the last meeting?
Yes. She was here at the last meeting, because, and I'll say this on TV, Marie Anne was in a golf lesson. So I texted her back, and I said, golf, question mark, really? Question mark. But that's how I got Kelly.
I have to say, Alan, I had the opportunity to work with you on that solar by, that second solar bylaw committee, and I think that was an excellent committee. And I think everybody was really focused on trying to come out with the right conclusions, and I know you have that mindset, so, I mean...
Yeah, I want us all to be on the same team. There's, you know, there's, we're too small a town to have it be the FinCom versus the Selectmen versus the School Committee.
There shouldn't be any versus.
There shouldn't be any versus anybody. You know, it's, it's, there's one tax levy, there's one pot. And out of that, you guys get a piece, and we get a piece, and the state tries to reimburse a piece, and we try to put that all back into the pot and make a meal. So there's no reason why we can't try to do this together, which is a whole lot better than you guys trying to do it, then you got to bring it back to us, and then it goes back over to the Selectmen, and it's a, you know, it's back and forth, and who needs that? We're not the city of Boston, we're not New York.
Do you know, what would you be looking for, for informational purposes from the, from our committee?
I think we already have it. I have a current budget from Brad. I'd like to see, we're going to, actually, this coming meeting, we're going to run some on the 23rd, the next Finance Committee meeting. We're going to touch on it quickly to get like some basic, a baseline for some numbers and start to crunch some data. We're going to ask Meg, I'll probably ask Brad, but I want to have the committee give their input. It's not going to really be the start of this yet.
As far as, what is this meeting, when is this group going to start?
We're going to decide that on the 23rd. This one here, I'm working on the grant program for the nonprofits and stuff, so we can get that rolling, because it really should have had their approvals if it had been at town meetings, so we're trying to...
The only other, I know, I don't want to get caught up on the whole...
June, just for you.
The whole vote concept, but I want to ask a question about voting. So you said if there were two school committee members there, they would have one vote. So my assumption would be the Finance Committee gets one vote, not each individual member of the Finance Committee.
I'm not sure how, that's, at this point in time, I'm not objecting to that. I don't have a problem with that. I don't.
I guess that was just my concern, if you're talking about...
You don't want to be 11, 11 against one, sure.
Right, right.
I understand that. I'm not, we're not trying to stack that deck.
And I guess my concern isn't even 11 against one because if it were, then, you know, we're that the school committee member is standing up for something that they believe in. My concern is more that one member is representing the voice of five in a way that they may not be necessarily representing that voice.
Oh, I'd like this committee to pick two people that'd like to be on it then. How's that?
I think, I think what James, I think to your bigger point is you want whatever suggestion is coming out of the FinCom to come back to this committee because we are our own sovereign entity to vote on ourselves.
So I guess to my point, if that school committee member is a voting member, that it is brought back here for discussion before an actual, before you represent that vote.
But see, the vote would probably be for you to take it back to the school committee. That's all I'm trying to say is that kind of voting's gonna be consensus-based.
Right.
So the vote would only be...
Do we wanna go through with this study all in favor? Do we wanna go with this kind of a study all in favor? Do we wanna go and look at first student taking over the buses? All in favor? That kind of stuff. We have no authority to come back and tell you guys what to do with five cents of your budget. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to come up with a consensus to sustain going forward the entire town budget.
Well, I can see James's point on that, though, is that if the two school committee members, whoever they are, vote on it to bring it back to our committee, it almost seems like you're approving the idea for the school committee.
The school committee idea. I would expect if you hated the idea, you would vote in favor of bringing an idea back to this committee. I don't care if you hate the program. You're still gonna bring it back.
If it was worded that way, just to bring it back for discussion.
Sure.
So that's really the key, Andy, is how that vote is worded.
Right.
Is, you know, what it's connected to. I still like the idea of representing to this committee before you make any actual vote because then you have input and feedback that way.
I agree with that.
I don't have a problem with that either. And it's a public meeting, so if you have two representatives that are on that committee and the other two wanna come, by all means.
Right.
I don't have a problem with, load the room up. I got no problem with that. I'm more the merrier.
Do we have any other discussion on this one?
So the value of the vote would symbolize, as you mentioned, the buses, for example.
For example.
Yeah, for an example. Okay, so if the, are we calling a subcommittee? Or if, if this other committee decided, yep, sustainability committee, we like that idea, then it comes here to us and the sustainability committee believes we should take a look at this. Then we look at it and we decide, nope, we don't like it. It just dies.
Then you come back to us and say, we don't wanna do it.
So really, those votes just symbolize time. Yeah.
But I will, but I will be honest with you...
To another committee, we would yea or nay it at this point anyway.
If that were the case, and let's use the buses for an example. If the, the group requested that they bring it back to the school committee, that we look at maybe first student taking over the buses. Now, I know you've looked into that in the past, but maybe this time it's a good deal. And you guys decide, no, we don't wanna do that. We're gonna keep our own buses leave status quo just the way it is. Doesn't mean that we still can't go look into that. We can go look in it. We just can't do anything about it. We can't, you know, come back and tell you guys, hey, we looked into it anyway, against your wishes, and this is what we found and we're gonna go forward and you have to do this. We don't have that authority. Well, we can still look into it. You can't stop us from looking into it any more than we can force you to do it. So, but I don't want it to become that adversarial. I want us to work together on it.
Yeah, but I'd say it is that adversarial. I mean, it's really at that point in this conversation. You know, we're, you're basically taking a line item and saying, well, we can look into it. Yeah, you can look into any of them. Well, we could just keep moving down the list and we could, every meeting come up with, you know, let's look at janitorial services. Look, look at this. You know, and then it's like a redundancy to Brad. You know what I mean? Hey, you've already looked at this, but we, you know, us 13 decided you need to look at it again and you've gotta come back. And so it becomes...
It's not, it's not gonna turn into something like that. It's not. I have far better things to do than to get into that kind of nonsense.
Well, I guess to my concern, part of it is like what you're talking about when you're saying, we've looked into that, we've done that. I mean, how much of that comes back to Brad where, you know, FinCom is looking for, because the educational budgeting system is very different and there are a lot of different requirements, which is why we have
That's right.
Brad.
And that's why we're gonna, we would rely on, on him providing us with some information.
But so to Brad's extent, how much does that mean Brad is gonna be teaching FinCom about educational budgeting? Because he's got a lot to do within his own structure, I guess.
I think he'll have a lot of teaching to do. We got, we got, we got Pat Mahar, who was a...
I know Pat.
All right, so...
And Steve Pratt.
You know, and Steve Pratt. So I mean, we, we got some, some pretty sharp people that are on the committee. I would, I would rely on Brad just to provide us with the raw data. He doesn't have to come in and give us a class.
No, I'm, I'm not implying it that way, Alan. I, I just think that a lot of the issues and concerns and questions you're gonna have are gonna be things that Brad is either dealing with on a regular basis or has already dealt with. In fact, you mentioned something about putting something together prior.
Yeah, we could. Just an outline of basic things we've looked into in the last couple of years. Just busing is a perfect example. I just got a spreadsheet the other day of what everyone else is painting around. That's all contracted out. And again, we blow that number out of the water internally.
Perfect.
I mean, I think transparency is always a good thing. And I think part of this is from serving on the FinCom for a long time before I joined this committee, it was totally different set of people in these positions. So there was a lot of distrust that, you know, that goes back to those, before those meetings started. And I think part of that, and we'll say, being on Alan's side of the, of the, of the, of the room on that side, there's like a little bit of a mystery of the school budget, you know, and I can understand kind of where they're coming from. I have no problem with transparency as long as they understand that those numbers do shift. They're not set in stone until like later in the year. We don't get numbers from the state until they...
I was referring to accurate numbers is what I was...
In that timeframe you were talking about, there's far more transparency between these two gentlemen than, than existed.
Oh, of course. Oh, there was, I was on the FinCom, we couldn't get any numbers from the school.
And, and Alan, to your accord, I, I know that the full intent of this is cooperation and, to try and, it's not about attacking in any way. I really think it's to bring everybody together to come up with the best conclusions because we know as a town, we're kinda looking at a dark tunnel coming ahead with, with what's going on financially. Unless there are solutions, we're gonna be running into some problems.
That's right.
Guaranteed.
I think that's the biggest piece of that is, I guess, at the end of the day, we need to find out as a town, what can we do to improve our revenue streams? Because every, that's the issue everywhere, both town and school side.
That's right.
And so your implications, those, all of that, everything is on the table.
I wanted somebody from planning on this committee and they thought I was nuts.
No, I, I would rather see more involvement. I would love to see other voices there.
Planning's the income side of the equation, I think.
I think someone from planning should have been writing letters to companies to try to get them to come to Kava for years.
I mean, that's the income side of the equation. Planning is the ones that are planning and development. They know what's coming. They know when it's coming.
Well, the properties are available.
What's in the pipeline, what's available. Sure. I think they ought to be a part of it. If I was overruled, I think that's crazy, but okay.
So before, um, okay, I'm...
But that's where we're, that's where we're going with this. We want, I, I wanna, I want all the information I can get so that exactly what Jim just said, and, and, you know, we, we don't wanna talk about the elephant in the room. But we don't wanna talk about overrides. We don't wanna talk about layoffs. We don't wanna talk about regionalization. We've already been through that and we undid it. So why would we ever wanna go back to it?
Right.
So we need to find a way to make it happen on our own.
Just build a new school.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So any, any further discussion on this?
Would we be open to having Brad be our representative and being able to come back to some of the information?
Town employee that was overruled already by the town administrator. Feel free to...
Ruled by the town?
I don't think Brad necessarily needs to be a...
Well, he's already gonna be there representing the, the factual data side of it.
Right.
And then i- if the vote is in essence a no vote anyway because it's coming back to us anyway for a vote. So anything that's actually voted on there that has anything to do with us has to come through all five of us anyway.
I think I'd rather have at least one member of the committee, but that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Brad and one member of the committee is what you're saying.
Oh, I thought you were just saying just Brad.
Well, I was saying Brad be the, be the voice of...
You're saying the town administrator doesn't want any town employees, so including himself.
Well, because they won't be voting, that's why. I, I think there's no, honestly and truly, I don't see where there's a need to vote on anything. I think it needs to be a consensus and that's it. If we're gonna tie things up with, you can't decide without running back to this committee, but they're not meeting for another three weeks and we're gonna have another meeting in two and a half weeks. Now, we can't do that because you guys haven't met yet. And the next thing you know is we're playing with this thing in January. And, 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 you know, then we're in the middle of budget season and the whole bit. And who wants to deal with that? You know, I don't make a career out of this. I just wanna make it so we can look at it to see what we're gonna do. This shouldn't take, you know, this shouldn't be an ongoing two-year study. I don't want it to become that. So I don't want us to get bogged down in the voting end of things. There's, we, the finance committee has no control over what you guys do whatsoever.
You used the term what we're gonna do. Then you mentioned there'd be a vote. Okay? So what we're gonna do, then coming with a vote.
Be more of a procedural thing. Do we wanna look into something? What do you guys think?
But I would also tell you that I would envision most of these things are already looked into.
I'm sure.
So that's why I'm saying if, if you just had Brad there, could already say, well, we have looked into it. Here it is, all the information. I'm not really sure it, what, him coming to the meetings and saying, all right, this is what I think. And then he just comes the next month and has to show us and then we vote on it. What was his say? It was like a meaningless vote. What did it mean?
They could bring up the discussion before, on the question, to come back to us if it's something that's actually worth doing. You know, we've experienced these things, you know, on an ongoing basis for years now. Brad being there for sure would be a definite help, you know, because he has, he has the actual numbers in front of him every day. I mean, I would have no problem participating, you know, having two people from our committee participating in this discussion with the, with the knowledge that anything that is suggested for the school committee business comes back to the school committee.
Well, that has to happen, yeah.
Right. So that, but that has to be understanding on that. I mean, what is the will of the committee here? Do, do we wanna make a, a motion to participate in this committee?
I, I would, I would make a motion of participation. I think, you know, we should be, I don't know how you wanna clarify who those representatives would be and if you wanna get into that tonight or maybe see what Mike's opinions are about Brad or whoever being a part of that. And...
You wanna try and table for the next meeting and discuss it or...
I mean, as Alan, to Alan's point, I don't wanna put anything off, but it seems to make sense until there's just a little bit more clarity as to what would be. But I, I mean, I don't think there's any contention that we will be involved. Right?
I have no problem with us being involved.
Yeah, and I think Stephanie should be here for the vote. She's, she could be, I mean, we were a three-two budget vote. I'd rather have all five of us here for that vote.
Five people.
Who the representative's gonna be. So you can make a motion to participate and then we'll figure out who the representative's gonna be.
That's all. You guys can decide who represents within yourselves. I mean, again, it's a public meeting. You guys are all welcome to show up. I mean, I have a problem with that.
All right. So do I have a motion to participate in this sustainability committee?
They can all show up, but they have to be careful about...
With two, two members?
Acting as a body.
I would, I would make a motion to...
Otherwise, it's a public meeting. You're violating the code.
For the school committee to support and be a part of the sustainability study committee with two member representatives, one voting.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Jason.
Sorry, Gina, I was speaking. Did you get that? Motion?
James made the motion.
Yeah, Jason seconded it.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Aye.
Can I ask a clarifying question? That was a motion to participate.
Participate.
With two representatives, one vote.
Two representatives, one vote.
Thank you.
And the sustainability committee?
We just haven't picked two of those people yet.
Yeah, we just have to pick the two members.
That's fine. You just gotta pick them. That's up to you guys. You can draw straws or something. Short straw wins or loses or however you want to go. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Alan.
Don't be on the end of Jermaine because everybody makes that mistake. And you look good to Andy Cardarelli. You guys...
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, teacher evaluation system?
Okay, teacher evaluation system. So as Tammy referenced in her comments in the APC, we've had, and it was part of our contract that was ratified by the school committee in January. We agreed that I would set up a committee to review the teacher evaluation system. The goal of the committee was to recommend revisions to the system to be ratified by the APC, which they've done, and the school committee by June. And we're hoping to have ratification by this group this evening. And so I'm just gonna, kinda take you through the system. I have, I provide you the entire language and the background, so you do have the full document, but I'll just kinda do, go through an overview of where we are and what we've done. First of all, I thank the members of the committee. All the names are up on the board. For sake of time, I won't read through all the names of everybody who participated in the committee. We did meet several times. We met four, four days and they were full-day meetings. So we did it as release time. We did it actually in the Makepeace Leadership Center in the, at Central Office. And there was a lot of rich and good discussions in those meetings. I really think they were valuable. The general consensus of the group is that the, the group worked well together. So I just wanna thank all the members of the group for their input, for their insight and for their perspective. I think everyone's perspective came into the final document. I'm gonna take you through legally what has to be in the evaluation system. There's gonna be a lot more detail on the slides that I'm gonna necessarily reference as I go through the slides. And then I'm gonna talk about what modifications we've made in the system that we still feel comply with the overall legal structure of the law for the new education evaluation system. So in essence, the evaluation system, this is, this is a DESI slide. There's five bullets there for the purpose of the evaluation system. It's one of the things we looked at at the beginning of our process. And, and we kind of identified two of those five bullets as really important to us, and those are the two that are highlighted. We said we wanted to work on a system that promotes the growth and development of teachers and places student learning, student learning at the center. And we had concerns about the current system and whether those two things were always the focus. And maybe we felt like there were some ancillary pieces that were the focus. So part of our revisions and part of our proposals this evening, hopefully will tie back to that concept of promoting the growth and development of teachers and place of student learning at the center. So the evaluation, I'm just gonna kinda take you quickly through a cycle of what's required. Self-assessment and goals. Each educator must develop an educator plan. The educator plan has to have one professional practice goal, one starting, one student learning goal, and outline the actions on how you obtain the goal. And that's a requirement of the law. Every, every teacher educator needs to do that. Everyone, it's based on four standards of effective teaching. Curriculum planning and assessment, teaching all students, family and community engagement, professional culture. Everyone's measured against those four standards. One of the large discussions we had was the rubric. So DESI has defined rubrics for kind of each profession, whether it be teacher, support assistant, superintendent, principal, administrator, school nurse. There's an ancillary piece to it. So each component of the school, DESI's established a rubric on how to assess these four standards of effective teaching. And we had a little bit of discussion of, you don't have to use DESI's rubric. You can modify it or you can create your own rubric of how are we gonna measure these four standards. But after discussion, the group decided that we would keep the DESI-defined rubrics. So we're staying with DESI's rubrics. Am I, am I a page ahead? Oh, yep, okay. Educated evaluation. So everyone has to establish two goals and then halfway through the process, they have to have a formative assessment. There's a lot of words up there. The quick summary of that is, teachers can be on a two-year plan or a one-year plan. If they're on a two-year plan, the formative assessment happens at mid-cycle, towards the end of the first year. If they're on a one-year plan, that formative happens in the middle of the cycle. We're gonna talk about formative evaluation a little bit, formative assessment, because we changed some things around the formative assessment. But I'll get to that when we get it. It is, it's a required part of the program, it's a required part of the evaluation system. Everyone has to have a formative. Everyone has to have a summative evaluation. Summative evaluation provided at the end of the plan. Some teachers have a self-directed growth plan. That summative evaluation has to happen after a two-year cycle. You could, a teacher can have a one-year self-directed growth plan with a summative at the end of one year. They could have a directed growth plan, which is generally, the summative's at the end of one year, but it could be a shorter period of time. A teacher could have an improvement plan. So the way it basically works is that most of our teachers without professional status, and this is a generalization, there, there are other categories you could be in, which is a broad brush for general perspective, is that our non-professional status teachers, teachers in year one, two, and three are is that our non-professional status teachers, teachers in year one, two, and three are on one-year plans, and they have a formative midway through the cycle, January or February. And then our teachers with professional status in general are on a two-year plan, where they have a formative at the end of the year. And that's all required as part of the law. The other piece that's required is evidence. And we're going to talk about some of the changes that we made in evidence. So, the law requires that teachers provide evidence against the evaluation system. Evidence of how they're achieving their goals, evidence of how they're performing against the four standards. And DESI came up with a model system for evidence that we adopted when we first brought the system on board. And we're going to see that some of our recommended changes is going to be around evidence, because that was a, evidence was just a huge piece for everybody. Yeah, for, the evidence piece was overwhelming for the teachers, the evidence piece was overwhelming for the administrators, and it was a part of the system that was creating a lot of anxiety on both sides. So we've made some changes there, but I'll get to that when we get to the changes. But the law requires that the teacher provide evidence on goals and performance against the standards. In the end, every teacher at their end of their, their cycle, with their summative evaluation, whether it be a one-year plan or a two-year plan, they get one of these ratings. Exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. Same ratings that you've done for me as superintendent, those ratings are the same, no matter what your role is within the educational system. To be rated proficient overall, a teacher shall, at minimum, have been rated proficient in curriculum assessment and curriculum planning and assessment, and teaching all students. So those two standards are specifically related to like almost classroom teaching. You have to be proficient in that to get an overall rating of proficient, and that is in the law. And then at your end-of-year summative rating, you can be placed on, if you're exemplary or proficient, you stay on a two-year plan. If you need improvement, you go to a directed growth plan. If you're unsatisfactory, you go to an improvement plan. So your rating at the end of your plan determines what your next plan is. So, that's, that's just like a basic, broad, big, big picture overview of this, how the system works. These are things we have to do. You have to have the goals, you have to have a formative assessment, you have to have a summative, you have to have one of these ratings, you have to be rated against the four standards. And then after you have your rating, you end up in one of these plans. So things that we had more direct control over, so our key agreements. And I'm not, I'm, in this presentation, I'm not overviewing every specific agreement we made. I just identified from my perspective what I thought were the key agreements. And as I said, the, the entire documents in the background for the group to review. And as I said, evidence was a huge piece. So under the current system, what we, what we had said, we had asked teachers to provide two pieces of evidence for each goal, and two to three pieces of evidence for each standard. Under the standards, there are 17 indicators in the rubric that perform performances against the standards. And under the indicator, there's 29 elements. Now, our suggestion was, we never came up, we never, we never ratified an official number that said every teacher had to pass in three pieces of evidence for each goal and for each standard. Does that make sense? It was a suggestion, but that suggestion was interpreted very broadly. And some people, I, I think it was really, their intentions were outstanding, actually. Some teachers said, you know what? I feel like I need to provide evidence for the whole rubric. So I need to provide a piece of evidence for every indicator, every element, every standard, because I want to show that I do my job, I do a great job. And so we, we would have some people who would turn in 40, 50 pieces of evidence. And we're taking the time to develop 40 or 50 pieces of evidence and turn them in, because they said, I want to show that I meet all the indicators and all the elements. So, the general, the general expectation was 12 to 8. Like I said, we never ratified an agreed-upon number. It was just a recommendation. And in theory, half the evidence was supposed to be due at the time of your formative. So if you were on a two-year plan, you're supposed to turn in half your evidence at the end of year one. If you're on a one-year plan, you're supposed to turn in half that evidence in January. And, like I said, the evidence piece just really became overwhelming in terms of what, what represented good evidence. So we, there was a lot of discussion about, this is good evidence, this may, this evidence may not be as strong. For each piece of evidence, the teacher was supposed to provide like a paragraph summary of how that evidence ties to the standard. So you as the evaluator, and having done this, you'd look at, so you could look at the piece of evidence and say, yeah, now I get, I understand how this ties. And the amount of work that was going into the evidence was really a lot, a large amount, it was a huge amount. And for a lot of people, it was anxiety-provoking. And it seemed like, I don't know if it was really a good match to the concept of, you know, making the system about student, you know, students' learning. And it wasn't really necessarily about even the teacher improving their performance. It became, so many people, I think it became like, this is my obligation, I have to do this, I have to provide this piece of evidence to show that I do my work. And, so, you know, the people's ranges of emotions around evidence were pretty wide. So this is a big piece of discussion of how can we make this less, less unwieldy for people? And, so I talked a little bit from the teacher's side, maybe not great, because I, obviously, I do, well, I do turn in the evidence, because I give you guys evidence for mine, so I do that piece of it. But even from the evaluator's standpoint, if you were an evaluator who got 45 pieces of evidence, you felt like, I have to look at all these pieces of evidence, because the person took the time to put this all together. So I have to review all 45 pieces of evidence, and then take that and write, write it into some cohesive summative evaluation report and statement about them. So the time that was being put in on both sides didn't seem to match the value of the evidence. So, what we put in, and we actually did say, we called it a new option, because there are some people who may like the system. And we said, if they want to do it the old way, they can. If they like feel really strong about doing evidence, they can do it. But what we put in the new option for evidence is one piece of evidence for each goal, remember, each teacher has two goals. And then they're going to make a summary of performance against the four standards. So the teacher can just write a summary. This is how I feel I meet standard one, this is how I feel I meet standard two, this is how I meet standard three, et cetera. Which is a lot different than actually compiling evidence and writing against the evidence. We'll have one piece of evidence for each goal for a two-year formative, and one piece of evidence for a summary against the standards for, okay, I'll take that back. So that, that was for your summative. For formatives, and this is a big change as well, is instead of saying half your evidence is due halfway through, so if you're on a two-year plan at the end of year one, you have to turn in half your evidence. All we're saying is, at the end of year one, if you're on a two-year plan, you just have to turn in a piece of evidence for each goal. What's your progress on your goals? And the only thing the evaluator is going to write about at the summative is your progress on your goals. So we, that created a lot less work on both sides. One piece of evidence, and then if you're, sorry if I'm getting too rambly, but if, because there's a lot of changes here. If you're on a one-year plan, because a teacher can either be on a two-year plan or a one-year plan, so you're a first-year teacher on a one-year plan. You have, for your formative, you have to turn in one piece of evidence for each goal, and then a quick summary statement on how you meet standards three and four, which is about professional practice and relationships with the community. So you just kind of say, this is, this is how my, this has been my outreach to parents so far in my first year as a teacher. Because the evaluator may not be aware of that, they may not know exactly what you've done yet, you're new in the system, so you get an opportunity to give them some information about that as they write the formative. This is a hu, this was a huge change. And we, we haven't ratified this yet, you haven't ratified it yet, but we decided, I made a decision, that we would do a trial this year. And the union agreed to that prior to their ratification. They just had ratification this past, last week. So we'll do a voluntary trial, and we put the new evidence structures in place for those people who wanted to do that. And so far, we've gotten a lot of positive on both sides that having this, having the evidence be different is going to be a positive change going forward. I think people are pretty supportive of it. Key agreements, I just touched on this a little bit. So the formative report changes. Right now, if you were on a two-year plan, so you're a professional status teacher, you've worked in the district for 10 years. You're on a two-year plan, you've had all proficiency, all good observations, you've done, you've been very successful. Your report at the end of year one was called the formative evaluation report. That report looked just like your summative. It was the exact same report. So in essence, the way the current system existed is every teacher got a summative evaluation at the end of each year. And we said, this doesn't make sense. So we made the formative less wieldy, and we said, if you're that teacher who's on a two-year plan, who's been in the district for 10 years, very successful, all proficient, so exemplarys, that you just have to provide some evidence on your goals, and at the end of year one, that's all the evaluator is going to write about. Here's your goals for your two-year plan, how, what progress have you made on those goals? You provide one piece of evidence. The person just writes about that one piece of evidence for each goal, and that's all you do. So that really changes that part of the system for everybody. Goal, we did change the goal rating system. The old, the current rating system was what we adopted from DESI, their recommendation, and we were using the ratings of no progress, some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded. And we just made it more streamlined. So if you're looking at a goal, you either have made no progress on that goal, you've made some progress on the goal, or you've met it. It's because we felt sometimes it was hard to determine, what does that actually mean, what's the difference between some and significant progress? What does it really mean to exceed the goal versus meeting the goal? So we just streamlined the language and went to three, a three-point rating scale. Observations. We redefined an observation in the system. So here's our new definition of the observation. I'm not going to read it to you. The key piece in there is that before, to be considered an observation report, had to be a 10-minute observation, had to be in the classroom for 10 minutes. We extended that time to 15 minutes. We said for, so if, if I go into a classroom, and I'm in a classroom less than 15 minutes, that's not an observation. I have to be in there, in the room 15 minutes, taking notes. That doesn't mean, and we're going to get, it's actually, next piece, we're going to talk about walkthroughs. Doesn't mean the teacher and I couldn't have a conversation about what I saw, it just wouldn't be a formal written observation report. Another big piece that I think we agreed to was, we actually set some minimums and maximums around observations, and we changed them a little bit. DESI had given some modeling, some, when we adopted this whole system, DESI put out a model system. And really, our group kind of adopted the model system. We made some small changes to it. This makes larger changes to that model system. So we've actually established some minimums and some maximums for observations. So I'll just, I will go through these, and I'll read them and talk about them quickly, more of the ones towards the end. So if you're a first-year teacher, you're required to have a minimum of one announced observation and three unannounced, no max. So the evaluator can go into our teacher's room and do as many observation reports as they want. If you're a teacher in year two or three, a minimum of one announced observation, two unannounced. This, obviously, the distinction between announced and unannounced is, the announced observation is, the teacher knows you're coming in, you have a pre-conference, you come in and do the observation, you have a post-conference. Unannounced, that, it's not announced. You just show up and you observe some classes. A teacher on a directed growth plan would have a minimum of two unannounced observations, no maximums. This is the big change. So a teacher on a two-year self-directed growth plan with professional status, which is, I, I don't have the percentage, that's, that's a large percentage of our staff. You figure if we looked at, we talked about our percentage on top steps, so two-thirds of our teachers are on the top step. You know, two-thirds of our teachers are on two-year self-directed growth plans, probably higher than that. It's probably 80% of our teachers are on a two-year self-directed growth plan. In that, what we've agreed to is a minimum of two observations with a maximum of four over the two-year period. So a teacher who's on a two-year plan, who's, by this said, I give that example again, teacher's been in the system for 10 years, has all proficient exemplary observations and evaluation results, and all, so all their summative evaluations have been proficient or exemplary, that that person would have two observations over a two-year period, because that's the requirement of the law, but would have no more than four. And the reason why this was put into place is, you know, the, the original, the reason why this whole law was passed and implemented in 2013, I believe, is there were, there were school districts where teachers were not being observed or evaluated. That was not the case in the Cal Republic schools. So at least, the time I was an administrator, we were always doing all of our evaluations and observations. You know, anecdotally, I have a friend who's a, a teacher in another district, who was a physical, physical education teacher, still is there. And before the system was implemented, had worked in that district for 18 years, and they said they had never once been formally evaluated. No administrator had ever come into their gym and done an evaluation on them. And that was happening in school districts, and there were teachers who were never being evaluated. Which is not the teacher's fault, that's the administration's fault. But it was a concern. So they, it became more stringent in terms of the number of observations that had to happen. And the whole base of the system was, let's have more walkthroughs, more discussions with teachers about teaching and learning. Let's get administrators in classrooms, and get administrators and teachers, and teachers and teachers talking about what's good practice, and trying to improve practice. And I think what happened a little bit is that, I, when this was, when this was passed, I was very excited about this. I, I was already, I had been someone who'd already gone, done a lot of walkthroughs, I believed in being in classrooms, I wanted to have conversations, and I was like, this is great. We're going to have all kinds of conversations, all kinds of observations. Not thinking it from the standpoint of the person who's a 10, 12, 20-year veteran saying, why are people observing my classroom eight times, 10 times? And they start thinking, A, they start thinking, is something going on? Is, you know, do I have specific attention on me? I don't, I don't need that many observations. Because the reality is, a formal observation, the matter, for some people, not all people, but for some people, creates a level of anxiety. So by doing eight observations on a professional status teacher who's been in the district for 15 years over two years, it's really, it's a little bit of overkill. They don't, they don't need that level. And, but we were doing that in some cases. Between our adminis, between our principals, assistant principals, department chairs, there were teachers who were having eight, 10 formal observations in their two-year cycle, who had proficient and exemplary ratings, and were really successful. So we all agreed that it would be beneficial to establish a maximum. So for any teacher on a two-year self-directed growth plan, we cannot do more than four formal observations over the two-year period. But I think a great caveat to that is, the next bullet, is any rating of an observation of needs improvement or unsatisfactory would remove the maximums. So if you went into a teacher who'd been in the district for 15 years, and you did an observation, you rated that observation as unsatisfactory, now there's no maximum. So now you can go back and get in and see if, and address concerns. But, so this is a, this is a big change in the system. Key agreement, we defined walkthrough, and the purpose of a walkthrough. And again, I'm not going to read this to you, but I'll go with the last bullet, provide feedback if appropriate but not necessary. In essence, the goal here, we wanted to create more conversations about what's happening in classrooms, and have more of those conversations not be evaluative. And the concept of, so yes, there's a maximum of four observations over the two-year cycle, right? But that doesn't mean you can't be in people's classrooms, and walking through, and talking, and talking about teaching and learning. And the goal of the system is to create more conversations about teaching and learning, and maybe more conversations about teaching and learning that aren't 100% evaluative, where the person's going to get a written formal observation report as a result of that discussion. And I think I have one more, then that's it. And the last one was an alternative pathway. So available for professional status teachers on a two-year self-directed growth plan, teachers can propose an independent project related to curriculum assessment instruction. The teacher must identify student learning and professional practice goals tied to the project. The formative reflection on the teacher's progress on completion of the project. Teachers would have two observations during the two-year cycle, because that's required by the law. Projects must be approved by the superintendent. An example that's in, this isn't, this isn't an easier example, and I, I will say, you know, this, this is a little bit of a new concept for us, and most of my examples, maybe because I was a middle high school administrator, I have to focus more on trying to come up with elementary examples of, what would be a good project at the elementary level. So one that we've talked about, let's say you were going to, say at the middle high school, you were going to introduce and teach a new course. First time this course was going to be taught, it's going to be an engineering course, because that's, we want to add an engineering course. That, in essence, your whole evaluation system could be based on the concept of designing that course and implementing it. And so it would make sense that your goals would be related to that, it would make sense that, you know, you might have a couple of observations in that new course in the second year. But everything that happens in evaluation would be based on, that's my project, I want to implement this new course. Now, obviously, elementary, you implement a new curriculum. We have, next year, we're talking about working on a different math curriculum. It could be the elementary K-2 teachers looking at, I'm going to implement the Bridges curriculum, that's my alternative pathway. So it just gives them different options on how to approach the evaluation system and present projects to the administration to be approved for the evaluations. I know, this is, this is something we spent days and days on. I, I don't know if I've done it justice in this, whatever time I just spent on that 20-minute presentation, 15-minute presentation. I wanted to try to get you some of the key ideas. So the summary, the big changes are around evidence, numbers of observations for professional status teachers, formative evaluations. And that, those pieces, again, I believe are going to remove stress points for everybody. And we, and I think it's going to be, make a system that's going to hopefully lead to more dialogue, more discussions. And a piece of it I didn't put in here is, what we actually agreed to is that, prior to doing a formative or summative evaluation, the teacher's going to do like that summary of their performance against the standards, that the evaluator will meet with them and just have a discussion about their performance against the standards. That's not required in the old system, so it didn't necessarily have to be a meeting. You had all these observations, all these things happening, but it wasn't necessarily a meeting with a discussion about education. Now we're actually creating a system where we're saying, that meeting may be a five-minute meeting, it may be a longer discussion about what that person's doing in their classroom. Which gets us back to that concept of improving teaching and learning, and making it student-focused and student-centered. So we're, I'm, I'm looking for approval for this document tonight. The union has, I said, as Tammy said, they ratified last Wednesday. And then this would put the new changes into effect for the next school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes for the teacher evaluation system.
Second.
Comments?
What is your, what is your platform for this evaluation?
So we, right now, we, we are just using DRIVE. So we used to use Baseline Edge. We found Baseline Edge to be not very effective, and not a very effective system. People just, everyone struggled with it. Administrators, evaluators, teachers. So, then we looked at some other... So then we looked at some other options, we evaluated some other storage systems, and one, one of the agreements, the original agreement is there, there is an evaluation committee that meets ongoing a couple of times a year, and through that committee, we had said, we agreed to go to have it done in the Drive platform. So everything is stored in Google Drive right now. Basically, a teacher has a team drive with their evaluator. Part of this agreement says that when the evaluation committee will meet by October of 2020, let's give, we said, we're saying, we're gonna give it a year to run it, the new system, then we're gonna come back together at the beginning of the next school year and say, how did last year go? Well, 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 what didn't go well? Do we need to make any changes or revisions to what we've done?
This was a pretty solid ratification, everybody happy with that? It's good, right? As a member of the, of the negotiations committee, and we, you know, we heard the, the concerns, it's, I'm, I'm glad you guys came up, this, I, I've been through several evaluation systems and some of them are just looking for ninety pieces of evidence and it's just ridiculous. And this just seems to be what the teachers were looking for and honestly, what's gonna, what's gonna benefit everybody in a, in a logical way, so I think it's great, great work for, from everybody.
Yeah, I agree. And as an evaluator who looked through forty-five pieces of evidence this afternoon to prepare for summatives, I really appreciate this. My question is, during the formatives, we, you have the summaries. If the summaries in the evaluator's opinion don't really match up to the unannounced that have been seen, so if there's a disconnect between what the evaluator sees in the unannounced and what's written in the summary, can they request evidence? Just to kind of validate what's in the summary?
Certainly. And the other, the other thing I was gonna ask about too was, and I, and we want it to be through a discussion. The other piece I didn't touch on here is if the evaluator's gonna change your rating at your formative, because under the, legally in the system, they can. So if you're on a two-year plan and you're at the end of year one and you're gonna get it, and against one of the standards, you're gonna go from proficient to exemplary, they have to write about that, and they have to say why they made that change. Or if they were gonna go from exemplary to proficient or exemplary to needs improvement, they'd have to write about that change. And our thought process would be, before they wrote about that change, they'd have a discussion with the teacher, but the teacher would know, and give the teacher the opportunity of, well, what additional evidence can you provide me? You know, so if, if you're gonna go from proficient to needs improvement, give the person the opportunity to say, or provide evidence, or have a discussion, or provide additional summaries of, of why they, why that shouldn't happen, why they feel like they've met the standard. So that, I didn't, I didn't mention that in here specifically, but that is part of the system.
So that's part of the plan, is that discussion first?
Yes.
I think that's a respectful outreach to the teachers where, you know, a lot of people often get comments when there's no conversation that ever happened, and they're like, well, what does that mean? Where'd that, where'd that come from? And I think that clarity, conversation first.
And our goal is to have those conversations before those formulas and summaries are written, which might be a little bit more of a daunting piece for the administrators and the teacher, because, you know, you know, if you have a caseload of, you know, one, my worst, I'll give you my worst-case example, one year I did have twenty-two formulas or summaries to write as the principal. You know, that, that I just created twenty-two meetings prior to writing those documents. But I think that's gonna be valuable, especially if it's a good, if it's a well-done summary and the evaluator administrator feel like it's a good reflection of what's happening in the classroom, we definitely have this conversation, if that's something, you know, they can use pieces of that summary in terms of writing the document, that's the purpose of it.
And one last clarifying, is this just for teachers, not for paras or admin, but all the, is this?
This is, this is just for teachers right now. Now, as part of the para negotiations this year, I agreed, and I'll look at EAPC members, I agreed that we would do a similar thing for them. So we, I haven't started that yet. My goal is when we come back next year in September, to form a similar committee with a couple of para professionals, couple of members of the administration, and redo their tool. The paras tool right now is actually a checklist, which is pretty outdated. So that's gonna be totally redone. In terms of the administrators, the piece I'd like to admit there is the same on the concept of the formative, so if an administrator's on a two-year self-directed growth plan and they've had, so they've had a rating of proficient or exemplary, and they have more than three years in the system, that their evaluation in their formative year would become goals only. So I am gonna implement that with the administrators as well. And in September, I'm gonna, I'll give the, a little foreshadowing to the committee, and in September, if the committee wishes, since I will, since I began my fourth year, you could do the same with me in terms of, you could allow me just to do goals only at the end of year one, which would be next year, and then the next year go back to the full evaluation system, but that would be your choice. I'll foreshadow that, when I bring my goals in September, I'll, I'll let you know that that year you can rate me and just give me progress on my goals only if you choose to.
We'll see.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Andrew, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
I have one question about this, in this document. Where is, is there any area that takes the weight of any parental input on a teacher? If someone has?
Teachers are supposed to, well, it's agreed that teachers will, well, after I could pull the, I should pull the language exactly so I say it right, is that it's, it's a recommendation suggesting that teachers will get student input and do student surveys. That was part of the original law. The original law doesn't, doesn't require parental surveys, so it was, teachers would survey their students. Administrators would survey their staff.
No, I'm talking about a parent that might have repeated complaints about a staff member. Does that get weighed into anywhere?
That's not part of the evaluation.
That's not part of the evaluation system tool, right.
Well, why wouldn't it be part of their job, evaluation?
It's not, not part of their job, it's not part of their evaluation.
So here, here's my broad answer to that question. My broad answer is multiple sources of evidence. And a administrator can use multiple sources of evidence in their evaluate, in the summative evaluation. So if there were, if there were consistent parental complaints about an issue, that, and that issue was brought to the teacher's attention, and, and the, and the administrator determined that the concerns were real and valid, and asked, and said to the teacher, I, I believe these concerns are real and valid and you need to make this adjustment, and the teacher didn't make that adjustment, that could certainly be in the summative evaluation. But it wouldn't be a direct?
There'd be room for consideration of repeated.
Right, that's all, that's a, that's a source of evidence.
Okay. That was my only question. Do we have a vote to, we have a vote to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, no one opposed, unanimous?
Aye. Thank you.
That's a big thing done, man, that was.
Yeah, that was a lot of work to end that, so I wanna thank again the EAPC and all the members of the committee. All right, school committee meetings. So we're looking at next year's meetings. We have two meeting calendars in here. Basically, one is to have the meetings on the second Mondays. There was something discussed about maybe moving the meetings to second Thursdays. Ultimately, when the school committee meets is the choice of the committee and the will of the committee. So, you know, we've historically always met on the second Monday. Sometimes the second Monday is problematic because the second Monday is, correlates with a holiday. So like, in next year's schedule, I believe both Columbus Day and Veterans Day are the second Mondays, so those months we'd have to meet either the third Monday or the first Monday, so it creates a little imbalance. Some people just think Thursday nights are better than Monday nights in terms of, because our meetings tend to go a little long. If you're gonna be here till nine-thirty, would you rather be here at nine-thirty on a Monday night or a Thursday night? Ultimately, I defer to the will of the committee on this. Does, doesn't matter to me. And I just picked Thursday nights because the suggestion was, do we have, do we consider another night rather than Monday? Someone else could say, I really like Wednesday nights, let's look at that.
Personally, I have to say Thursday nights would work out much better for me, but, but let's see, let's see what the will of the committee is. I'd like to change it to.
I brought it up, so the, the change was my, kind of my idea, so I'm, I'm all for moving it to Thursdays, so.
I don't know, I mean, I, I, seven years of Mondays I've been coming, so I don't know, it, it just appears weird to me to make that switch. I, I mean, if the committee's for it, I, I'd go with it. I tend to, would rather do it on Mondays myself, only because that's a day that is, I guess I'm common with, and it's a day that sort of works out. Thursdays can be hectic, busy days, so.
I mean, it works, either, either one works for me, but whatever you, whatever the will of the committee is. Stephanie said that she.
Doesn't care.
Yeah, didn't care, she goes to the will of the committee. If you want me to share that.
I don't care.
So I got two, we got two Thursdays and two, uh, Monday and two I don't care.
Need a motion to officially move it, since it's under recommendations?
You know, I'd rather have a consensus idea where we're going because it's two different votes, it could be, I guess.
So you wanna, maybe I can call for.
Maybe someone can make a motion to move, to have the meetings be the Thursday schedule?
Yeah, we do that, we have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move the school committee meetings to the second Thursday of every month.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So on the Thursday calendar?
Oh, oh, I should, oh, I, sorry, I should've asked if there was any further discussion on that, sorry.
On the Thursday calendar, I'd like to leave that one open, whether we do the eighth or the fifteenth. Just because, and actually, this is gonna be true whether it was Monday or Thursday, I just don't, I have, I'll be, I have not set my personal vacation schedule. I'm going away one of those two weeks, the second or the third week, probably the second week. So I, I guess I'd, if, if you're okay leaving that open for a couple of weeks, I'll tell you in June, what, if we're gonna do the third, the August fifteenth. So that, my sense would be we, August fifteenth, the third, third Thursday.
I'm on vacation the fifteenth.
You're on vacation the fifteenth? All right, anybody else on vacation that week in August? Well, I guess, why we say this, for our June meeting, why don't we look at our vacation schedules and we'll pick an August date?
Okay.
But September four, we'll go, September we'll do Thursdays? Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so, so June we'll look at, well, we'll pick the August meeting date in June, based on everybody's vacation schedules.
Okay, sounds good. All right, next.
Can I just put all the field trips together?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trips for Europe 2021, grade seven New York City, December sixth, 2019 trip, and the French students grades nine through twelve to Quebec, Canada, February of 2020.
Can we read a motion, or need a second?
Can I, and if I just make one notification on this, is the other trip, the Europe trip and the grade seven trip are trips that we, that usually occur. Actually, is that the grade eight, is that a mistake? It's the grade eight trip. So let's, let's correct the mistake.
New York City?
Yeah, it's the grade eight trip to New York City, December sixth, 2019, not grade seven. That's a grade eight. The Europe trip's a traditional trip that we, you know, if we get enough students, we try to do the, the Europe trip every year. The French trip to Canada, we did that for, I think, three years, and we haven't done it in three or four, so this is, this is a trip we've done before. It's a trip that the people running have been on, have experience in doing it, but it's a new trip for us a little bit because it's been a couple of years since we've done it. So I'm, yeah, so I wanna make a couple of years, so I just wanted to make, point that out. Yeah.
Any further debates, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, so budget transfers.
Yeah, before we get into FY19, do we wanna talk about FY20 and how we'll have an update? Or do you wanna?
Let's leave that for now, we'll just come back to it in, well, June, I guess you can say in June we'll have an update for FY20.
We will, but do we wanna talk about what we'd like to do for anticipated posting?
No, we're gonna hold off on that a little bit.
All right. So FY19 budget transfers, you have three tabs on there. You have the five-two overall, you have the entire journal entry, and then you have the highlights, the highlights is Meredith, that's one you can go to. So it's not showing me numbers on your side, I know you guys like to hear the numbers, so give me a second. That's you, James.
It's a small list, though.
Yeah.
I'll bring my charger with me next time.
Okay, so the first couple are, the first one is just a district-wide sped contracted services, that falls in line with all of our sped actual budget line items this year, again, sure, as of to date. Next two are the teacher long-term subs. We're doing not great in the long term, we have, I think, three or four, maybe possibly five maternity leaves and long-term absences that we're covering for the rest of the year, so we're journal entering a little bit of money into that. But we also saved on other short-term subs this year, not a crazy year for sickness, so we did pretty well on that. Classroom aides at CES and the middle high school, we're journal entering more money into there. This is based off the contractual increases, but these two accounts are gonna go more into the red as we go along, but we do have money in two-forty because we had such a changeover in terms of para professionals, that the original ones who were allocated to be paid off the grant left. We kept the new budget as people came in, we charged them to the operational budget, and now it's just moving the money over from the operational to the grant. Let's see here. Elementary English textbooks, we're taking away sixteen thousand, we are adding it to the elementary math textbooks based on curriculum needs, that the elementary school felt that the math curriculum, they like to purchase a program, and that's what we're gonna do, move forward with that. District-wide sped additional equipment, again, just wanna highlight, that's another short area, same as the sped eval testing. Sped contracted services, again, I just wanna highlight this because this is gonna be a continued area of up and down rollercoaster ride. That is the out-of-district contracts that we have for transportation. We're kicking in another two thousand dollars to that, that's gonna bring that grand total just under two hundred grand for FY19 budget. Homeless transportation, again, that's an up and down one. If a student moves out, we may be eligible, we may be eligible to pay their expenses for the whole year. Sometimes they find residency right away, it all depends and fluctuates. That is a line item that we are looking to move two thousand dollars out of, and we're gonna spend roughly in the twenty-five thousand dollar range if everything stays current for the rest of the year. Elementary at the middle high school, we have two bills left. We're in a pretty good spot right there, so we took off six thousand. I would've taken more off, but I'll hit that later on, and then bottom one. Health insurance, we had a couple of people drop from individual, excuse me, from family to individual, and a couple of people dropped health insurance altogether, and if you guys remember, we use February first enrollment numbers for our next year's operational, so again, that can fluctuate either way. We had a fifty thousand dollar savings this year in that. Plymouth Carver retiree health insurance, how that works is Plymouth actually holds all of those enrollees on a plan and they bill us back every April for that. It's an aging population, so that number just keeps declining as people pass away. So we actually, we're projected to spend seventy-two thousand based on last year's bill, that actually came in at fifty-seven for this year. So again, that actually helps next year's budget because I think I carried over right around seventy thousand for the actual budget. So we know that number at the worst-case scenario will come in at fifty-seven thousand next year, again, and we think that'll continue to decrease as we go on. Retiree health insurance, we had a mid-year adjustment. Harvard Pilgrim Medicare plan was dropped and everyone went on to the Blue Care, excuse me, Blue Cross Blue Shield Network Plan for retirees, that saved right around forty-five thousand, that's money will kick in to the line item right below that. So the secondary sped tuition line, we were ninety-four thousand dollars short alone on that line. So the savings pretty much between both retiree health insurance and active health insurance covered that line item expense. I won't have you guys open it, but on the five-two, when you look at the overall budget, the other line item is the sped secondary tuitions for collaboratives, that's all at the middle high school level, for out-of-district placements, that number alone is one hundred seventy thousand dollars short. So that's one thing I want to, you guys remember as we go through the next few down below, that one seventy number is an amount we're chasing. I'd love to cover all of our, any savings we have, individual items at the end of the year, we transfer that in to drop that shortfall a little bit, but with the sped reserve account that the town did set up, that's the balance, how we'll offset that at the end of the year. I don't wanna put a hard number to say we're gonna be in the hundred to one-twenty range, but that'd be my guess if I had to project it out right now, which would leave right around sixty to eighty thousand in that sped reserve account with the additional.
Plus the one-oh-five.
That came in as the town meeting as well. So if you look just at natural gas, we have one bill left, actually, excuse me, we have two bills left for that. Usually the last bill, very minimal cost based on, gets a little bit warmer in the buildings, we don't have to turn on the heat. So those two numbers, I'm hoping to capitalize anywhere between ten to fifteen thousand to offset that sped cost. And also we have, don't worry about the telecommunications services, the electric, And also, we have, don't worry about the telecommunications services, the electric, electric as well, we're projected to have some savings in there that, again, we can kick in to offset the, the special let overage we have. Again, the goal of all of this, the bottom one, is to put the balances that we have in those accounts to offset where our shortfall is for sped reserve account, we have to take less out of that.
Brad, when you said about the electricity savings, it scrolled down real fast, was that at the middle high school, or was that at the elementary?
Scroll down, Meredith. Are you on the third tab? Go to highlights.
Highlights.
Last one.
Yep, and go down.
Last two.
It's all three buildings right now. We're projected to save, including central office, we're projecting, obviously, I don't have all the bills in yet, but I'm projecting to have anywhere from, I'd say, fifteen to twenty grand in each building.
So, we were really concerned about those line items?
Yeah.
Early in the year?
Yep.
Because the bills were coming in crazy?
Yep.
And we were, we were like, we were projecting the other way.
Right.
And, but the end result is?
After the systems, every, everything that they told us that I thought was crazy, because just our usage was so high the first four months, it really didn't need one cycle of running through for the first three, four months, and it's bad.
So, we, we went, we went from thinking we were going to have thousands of dollars being short?
Yeah.
To being on the good side.
Yep. Piece of this, though, don't forget, which is important, because I don't want us to think that we overestimated next year's budget, is forty thousand dollars of elementary electrical costs, we're journal entry back into the actual project cost, because it was a? Right. It was an expense before we actually took over the building that we used that one-time money for.
So, we might be actually right on the number.
Exactly. Exactly.
All right. Any other discussion on our budget transfers?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers for FY19.
Second?
Seconded.
Motion second, all those approve?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay. I lost my computer here, so.
So, it's reports to the school committee?
Oh, reports to the school.
That's where we are, if any.
On this membership, my email address is, is missing a letter. Between the J and the G, there should be a W, just for?
If you can scribble it down, if there's any changes, that'd be great.
James?
Lots of events coming up, but one of the big ones is all you lucky seniors who are going to be graduating before we meet again, so congratulations to all of you and all that hard work getting through.
Definitely. All right, Andrew?